This one works.
July 31st, 2018, special city council meeting. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Reddick?
Here, here, here.
Councilmember Eisen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rorbeck?
Mayor.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a call.
Let's rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, one nation, under God, in the great soul of the Constitution of America.
There is nothing to report out from our closed session.
Resolutions and staff reports. Resolution 1A, staff report.
Madam Mayor and council members, glad to be with you. Hope to keep this short, the presentation short, and then be able to answer questions and move through this meeting somewhat swiftly. What I'm bringing before you today is a resolution to place a commercial cannabis tax on the November 6th, 2018 ballot. By way of background, on June 19th of this year, we came to you with several items for the November ballot. This included a proposed nursery ordinance in its entirety, as well as three advisory measures around commercial cannabis. One, asking the question, should we allow and regulate commercial cannabis, full cultivation, manufacturing, and retail? At that meeting, you placed all four of those items onto the November ballot. If you remember, we also presented a financial and tax analysis report on the commercial cannabis industry, prepared by our consultant, HDL, and they gave a report on, you know, the methodology and the potential revenue that could be derived through taxation on commercial cannabis activities, should the city move forward with those in the future. And following that report, you directed staff to bring this ordinance back for your review and approval. So, the ordinance that we're bringing before you tonight does not modify the city's current ban. We currently do not authorize any commercial cannabis activities within the city, and approval of this measure would not change that. What it does do is it gives the city authority to collect tax revenue on any commercial cannabis activities, should the voters in November or in the future city allow these businesses to operate within Half Moon Bay. The other thing it does is, one of the items that we don't regulate is outside deliveries. These are businesses that are located in other jurisdictions and are licensed and in compliance with the law, but make deliveries to Half Moon Bay, and we would be able to collect revenue on those as well. So, going back, just as a quick reminder on the HDL tax report, this chart before you is a summary of, based on all the methodology and assumptions that were made through that report, what we could potentially see, should the city authorize cannabis activities. What it doesn't show is, on the low end, if no additional, no activities were authorized through the November election, and all that could, were to happen, were the continued retail deliveries from outside jurisdictions, we estimate $64,000 of annual revenue through the taxes being proposed. Should additional activities be authorized through the November election or at a future time? At the low end, if we were to allow all types of activities, the city could generate approximately $700,000 in annual tax revenues. At the high end, as much as $1.5 million. So, the ordinance that's before you, it does a couple of things. It establishes procedures for the imposition, collection, and enforcement of cannabis business taxes, and it sets the maximum annual tax rates for each of the business types. So, for cultivation, which would include both nursery and full cultivation, the maximum tax rates would range from $2 to $10 per canopy square foot. And again, that depends on what type of cultivation we're talking about. For retail, we'd be looking at 6% of gross receipts, whether it's dispensary or deliveries that are businesses registered here in Half Moon Bay. A 2.5% of gross receipts tax for testing labs, 3% of gross receipts for distribution, transportation of cannabis items in and out of Half Moon Bay, and 4% of groceries, gross receipts for any manufacturing activities we would allow. And these being the top end, the council would not be able to modify or increase these taxation amounts without going back to the voters. The other thing that the ordinance does through this resolution is sets the initial tax rates that would be imposed if this were to be approved, and generally, you set lower initial tax rates for a new industry to allow it to grow and see what it can bear. And then through resolution, the council can modify those tax rates over time, up to the maximum amount authorized in the ordinance. And so, the initial tax rates range from $1 to $7 per canopy square foot for cultivation, 4% of gross receipts for retail, 1% of gross receipts for testing labs, 2% of gross receipts for distribution, and 2.5% of gross receipts for manufacturing. In the packet that you were given, the initial, or the proposed ballot question is shown here. Subsequent to the issuance of this staff report for a previous meeting and then before this meeting, there's been some additional discussions about the wording of this proposed ballot question, and we'd like to present to you tonight revised wording. And what we hope it does is it clarifies, it reads more easily to, especially to the layperson who isn't familiar with legalese and would be looking at this on the ballot. And it, we hope it clarifies that the minimum revenue that we expect to generate from this is $64,000 annually, which again, references the deliveries from outside jurisdictions. But more could be derived if other activities were to be authorized in the future. So, the revised ballot question, the wording's a little different. It is worded in a way that it just makes a little more sense, and then specifically, if you look down towards the bottom of the paragraph, it's estimated to raise at least approximately $64,000 annually. And that wording hopefully clarifies to folks that that's the minimum we expect. If there were other activities authorized, there could be more. The wording says $64,000 annually from deliveries, and potentially more if other businesses are allowed. So, we believe that this language is a little more clear and will help folks that are looking at this on the ballot to better understand what we're trying to accomplish here. So, a couple of items to consider, as you consider this ordinance tonight, is the city attorney impartial analysis that will need to be written to be included in the voter guide. Do you print the full text of the proposed ordinance, which comes at an additional cost? Now, going back to our previous meeting, where you decided to include the full text of the nursery ordinance, that ordinance in its entirety is printed in the voter materials, it is not in its entirety on the ballot. So, the same question applies here. We have made an assumption that you'd want to take the same approach, and so, the resolution attached to this, which would be included in the voter materials, does include the entire ordinance. But again, there is additional cost associated with that, as far as the costs to the county elections office. You have the opportunity for city council members to write the arguments for or against the proposed ballot measure, and if the council chose not to, we have the argument deadlines for outside groups, which is August 13th for the initial for and against arguments, and August 23rd for rebuttals. So, there's going to be a quick turnaround for this item.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, we're going to be taking action tonight, I assume. How are we going to communicate to the public these deadlines for ballot arguments?
I'll turn the time over to our clerk for that one.
Malcolm Smith and I are working on a news release, Nextdoor Post, and Special E-News. The information will also be published in the paper, and then we will have it on our website as well.
And so, that's the end of our presentation. Our recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the form of a proposed ordinance amending the municipal code to tax cannabis businesses ordering submission of the proposed ordinance to the electors of the city at the November 6th, 2018 general election, and providing for written arguments regarding the measure, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure. And I'm happy to take any questions or public comment.
Thank you. I'd like to do a public comment.
Hello. Thank you, city council members, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stella Chow. I'm the substance abuse prevention coordinator in the community health promotion unit with the San Mateo County Health System. If the city council is going to put language on the ballot this November about having a taxation system for marijuana products, we would recommend that you consider a structure that would provide resources for drug prevention education, especially for youth in your community. To give you a sense of marijuana use rates in your area, I'd like to give you some statistics from the California Healthy Kids Survey. 2015-16 data included, or indicated that in the 11th grade, 23% of Cabrillo Unified School students who took the survey had used marijuana in the last 30 days. This rate is 9% higher than overall San Mateo County rates of 11th graders reporting 14% having used in the last 30 days. More current surveys have been conducted, but the results are not yet public. Lastly, the San Mateo County Youth Commissioners have been working on a youth-friendly resource on marijuana. Please visit the Instagram page at cannabis underscore decoded, or the website at cannabisdecoded.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Stella. Eric?
I'll hit the button. Perfect. Thanks for listening. We'll make this short, because it looks like this is the only thing on the agenda. I just want to correct right off the bat, Half Moon Bay's recent article about how cannabis tax is not going to provide a windfall. The only example that was used there was the 1% or the $1 per square foot tax. Didn't talk about the $3 per square foot, didn't talk about the 1% to 3% gross product sales tax. I believe 3% is fair for the ag community, while still giving back a considerable amount to the community. And I firmly agree with Ms. Chow, I'm assuming it's Ms. Chow, that a good percentage, if not most, of these tax revenues should go to drug education, after-school youth development programs, and even enforcement, whether that's dealing with ICE and the legal issues around that, or whether it's dealing with the actual enforcement within the city. And I would completely agree that the marijuana usage in Half Moon Bay and on the coast is going to be higher than the rest of San Mateo County. And for that reason, I believe that these tax funds would be well proportioned and well given to these types of programs. So, thanks for listening to us tonight, guys, and hopefully this will be short.
Thank you, Eric. Questions from council?
So, I have two questions. So, the full text, what is the cost? Like, what are we talking about there? Just to give me a sense. Are we talking like five grand?
It's roughly $2,000 per page. It's, this paper document, obviously, is not the size of the page there. They do a smaller font. So, it's probably going to be about, how many pages is the ordinance? 20? Probably about 10 pages.
Yes, that's a decent, so, I could be open to putting a smaller version of the text in, see what the rest of the council thinks, and then referring people to our website where the full ordinance would be. I guess some people might not have access to the internet, which might be the argument to that, but, I don't know, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that real quick, just to deliberate that topic. That's, you're saying it's $2,000 per page? And 20 pages? That's a significant investment.
I think you wanted to, I'm in favor of publishing the entire ordinance. You know, we have a large senior population in this town who are also voters, and they don't want real tiny print, right? They want big print. And we can't really afford to give them big print, but we can, you know, 11-12 point type, you know, with reading glasses, that's about right.
Now, so you don't think it would be easier to read on the website, where we can actually, like, make it bigger for people to read, as opposed to?
I think you have to have all the information for people who don't do internet, who still like to dog ear, you know, a copy of whatever it is they're reading, and, yeah.
My feeling is we need to have it both places.
Got it. All right. Can you pull that? All right, next.
Are we hosting a cannabis education session for, like, the town in terms of, like, going through the ordinance? I don't know how that's working, but I feel like that would be extremely beneficial, set up, send out. I don't know how that would work, but just throwing that out there as a topic, so people actually understand what is in the ordinance, if they don't want to have to, like, read through it themselves, they can come to a presentation, hear each topic, ask all the questions they want to, but that way, people know what they're voting on, as opposed to just, yes, on cannabis, no, on cannabis?
I'm just going to chime in in terms of just one legal issue that we have to be mindful of with ballot measures, which is that jurisdictions are prohibited from spending public funds in support of, so you can't basically use public monies to argue for a yes or a no vote on ballot measures. So, you know, while there have been obviously numerous opportunities over the past year or so to learn about the ordinance that will be before the voters, there's somewhat of a limitation once things have been put on the ballot, to make sure that it's strictly informational and not arguing for a yes or a no vote.
I'm guessing some folks could challenge, you know, whatever, the interpretation, yeah. Something to think about.
And all thoughts are, too dangerous a thing to educate the public on what they're voting on, more or less? Is that what we're talking about? Basically telling me?
Well, there have just been numerous, you know, there have been numerous opportunities to educate the public in terms of the community meetings, and the city council meetings have all been very educational. You know, I certainly can, we can certainly work with staff to identify any, you know, other needs in terms of information. Obviously, if it is strictly informational, then it is permissible under those rulings.
My feeling is that there are other ways to accomplish this without another community meeting. We could do a blurb on our website.
Q and A?
And just, yeah, Q and A, or just a simple description of what it is and what it is not. We could put flyers out, and that would save us the time and money for a community meeting when we've got so many community meetings scheduled already and so many coming up.
I'm guessing also that folks might, maybe the review or legal and voters have a sort of a forum where you can hear pros and cons and something educational, so maybe working with another organization to educate? I'm just throwing that out as a potential.
I'd be very happy to have it done in that forum as well, if that's a possibility. But I mean, to me, it's, you know, there's people interested and not interested. It was a minority of the entire community. Now that it's on the ballot, people are going to be much more, okay, well, what is it? And then, for the people that don't know that there's, you know, what's going to happen with the smell, what's going to happen with, you know, all the various questions that we've been fielding for months, it's all in the ordinance, and it'd be great to actually let people know all those facts, and then decide however they want to, not either way, you know, but at least they know what the ordinance contains, as opposed to having to read it themselves. But I'm happy to have a nonprofit do it.
Well, what if we'd had, like, a frequently asked questions? You know, make it a flyer, also have it on the website, you know, maybe post, create an ad for the review that's the FAQ, reviewed by the attorney, to make sure that we're not trampling on the law. But that might be one way to do it, a simpler way to do it. What do you think?
Yeah, I think, I think we've given the community plenty of opportunity to speak up on the issue and to give their opinions on the issue, and if we have a community meeting, I'm afraid it's going to turn into another, I don't want the ordinance, I do want the ordinance, kind of discussion, which is what we don't want. So, I think a flyer and a website, and I think frequently asked questions is a great approach to it.
Can I ask a question? Just for clarification, Councilman Eisen, when you're asking about the ordinance, are we specifically just talking about the tax ordinance, or are you just looking for, now that things are going on the ballot, just more information about all the things that are going on the ballot?
No, I was, all the things going on the ballot, but you, good clarification, yeah.
So, one of the things we can do is, we have a really great webpage dedicated to the history of what we've been working on all along, and, you know, the staff reports contain a lot of the information you're talking about when it talks about what's in the ordinance and what is it trying to address. One of the things we can do following this meeting is sit down with our communication consultant and go through that webpage and just make sure that all the information that should be there is there, and it's clear and easy to find, and then maybe extract some really key information into a better FAQ, from questions we've already gotten, because we've already received a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, and I think, again, you know, it's important for some segment of the population, you know, first of all, we'll have things in Spanish, but also to have something that's a hard copy, you know, for people who don't necessarily go online, it would be nice to have that someplace, or for non-internet users.
Okay, I'm good. And then on the tax, the tax issue that was brought up. So, I like, I like the, I like the thought process. You know, somebody once came to one of our council meetings and said, what are you guys doing to prevent the youth from, you know, becoming drug addicts or whatever? I don't remember exactly what they said, but that was the basic thought process. And I think, at the time, I had suggested something like this, I think I said maybe 10% or 15%, we can discuss whatever you guys want to do, I don't know, but going to some sort of service to deal with maybe, like, drug counseling, drug addiction, you know, whatever services we want to talk about in school, that I guess other people would deem is the best way to spend the money. I'm for that.
Is that something that we should handle if and when the ordinance is passed, perhaps? How to discuss, rather than prior to it's even being put on the ballot? That's what my thinking is.
So, the tax that's being proposed tonight is a general tax, which means any revenues derived go into the general fund, and they're not earmarked for any specific purpose. If you do a specific tax, it changes, or a special tax, it changes how it gets voted on in the process. And so, I think, as the mayor mentioned, if the tax passes, it's more of a budgetary, annual budget decision, that you can decide, you know, if you want to do a percentage or a specific dollar amount at that point.
Questions or comments by council?
I just want to point out, so that, you know, the state is collecting a lot of money. You know, the statewide taxation of cannabis is going to produce a very large pot of money for just this purpose. You know, drug education, you know, reaching out to at-risk youth, school programs and all of that. So, there's going to be sizable pot of money for this. Yeah.
Something like 35% that goes to the state? Yeah. So, the 3% we're talking about is peanuts.
Any more discussion? Can I have a motion, please?
I have a quick question. Is the recommendation, the recommended motion also, or is it the?
No, it'll have to specify that it's, if you'd like to use the modified language, you'd want to specify that in the recommendation.
So, the recommendation as written doesn't need to be amended?
If you're interested in using the ballot question, the revised ballot question, I would suggest moving the staff recommendation with the modified ballot question.
I move the staff recommendation with the modified ballot question.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hello, I am Michael Salzito. Been living here since 1994. Jeff Clark's son was my first friend, Kevin. Very well-known in this town for good or for bad, but mostly good. I run manic bipolar. I believe in this plant because certain strains of it actually taper the repercussions in my actions. I'm not here to say that it's for everybody. Neither is alcohol, neither is driving a Tesla that drives itself in a womb blows itself up. My whole point being is that if you educate people on what it is, just like alcohol or driving a car, there are rules, regulations, and punishments, just like it should be with alcohol. Point being is that I only smoke indica, Kush, whatever you want to call it, that particular cannabinoid works for me. I'm also on Depakote, 1,000 milligrams I take at night. Between those two, I'm a completely different person. Now, I've tried it with and without, and with the medicine and the cannabis, for my particular bipolar one, which runs very steep and deep in this whole community and everywhere, it actually works for me. And I'm saying that personally. My family sees a difference, my doctors see a difference. I think that you have to be regulated on this at 18, 21, whatever, 21 is the age for anything, I think. After that, it's, it lies in the parents. How do you raise your kids? What you teach them? What are the guidelines for your rules, regulations, and boundaries, just like raising an animal, a dog? If you think cannabis is okay, and you're in Santa Cruz, and your parents are growers, and you're 16, well, that's the message you're going to send to your kid. Point being, I have family in Santa Cruz, I have family in Half Moon Bay, and I have family all over. Half Moon Bay needs to be more educated and up to par and up to pace with what's going on. Humboldt, Santa Cruz, everyone's got a really good understanding of what the community benefits from it and what has not benefited from it illegally. Illegal grows, DMing, poisoning bears, the whole forest industry and all that stuff. Cartel, Mexican, it just gets messy up there. Now that it's legal, everything's dispersing. If you organize it and tax it and regulate it, not only will it go to schools, everything that we could possibly think about that we need for that being, also, I'm under the influence right now of cannabis, having this conversation. So, I cannot speak this way if I was not on it. I would rambling and mambling and going all that, but I'm on point. Point being is that it does work for me. I'm a 34-year-old man, so I can say what I would like cordially. And indica, for me. Sativa, that's too psychoactive. Of course, it's going to be weird for anybody. It's too much of an upper plant, it's like drinking coffee, but different. I happen to smoke something that puts me in a state of clarity, because my brain is a natural sativa plant. So, with the indica and my medicine, it works for me. I think this community owes itself to try it out, small, pass it, and see if it works, and give it a chance. That's all I'm saying. And there's jobs, people that need them, money that needs to be made, roads that need to be fixed, more, just for the kids, if anything, because the money's going to go to schools, as you can tell, we got, oh, this is not the same Half Moon Bay in 90s. And now, here we are, talking about cannabis. This cannabis plant could change a lot in this town. And so, that's my point being, as a local that's lived here since 1994, I took my time out of my day to come here to say this. And so, I'm all for it, and if not, then, well, it is legal still. So, I'm just here to show my support for the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we include that as part of public comment, even though we've adjourned? Will you fill out a blue card, please? Thank you.